I grew up doing sports and activities and in hindsight, I just realized how much I learned from it. Time management, respect, and team camaraderie. That component like really drove me to want to become a PE teacher.
So as I fall down, I snake my chest down. Chest and thighs are on the ground. As I come up, my chest comes up and I'm going to pop my feet as close to my hands as possible. And then I'm going to do here. Okay? Let's try it again.
This class is basically about just starting weightlifting and getting the basics down and learning how to do it safely and.
Pop my hips so the kettlebell goes up to my eyes. I'm going to do eight of those.
I think since it's such a new program, they kind of know that the opportunity is rare for them.
I remember last year I walk around and like if I would walk into PE, I would like look over and see him like weightlifting and I just really wanted to do all of it, but I had to wait till eighth grade.
Touch your chest with the bar, then what? All the way up.
They're intrigued by it. They want to work out. They want to be better. They want to get stronger.
I was curious about like getting good form and squatting and deadlifting and knowing how to do all that.
I got into it because I'm a multi-sport athlete and so it's really important to me to like grow my muscles and grow them in a safe way. And that's what we're learning here.
The idea was to teach them every little component.
But you as a partner, you're responsible for being there to save them.
Then they can be self-sufficient and go to a gym and know how to do things safely.
If you want to lift when you're older and things like that, you'll know how to do it because your teacher or trainer is teaching how to do everything right.
Okay? It's an explosive hinge.
Juice is the weight room attendant. Kind of oversees the whole thing.
One more rep. Down and up. One more. Come on. And down. One more.
He's actually kind of a wuss when it comes to weights, so he kind of stays back and watch, but he definitely surveys the room and sees what's going on.
He's just nice to have around and cute face to look at.
One, up. Yeah, good boy.
My favorite part about this class is just like everyone is very like open and everyone's just able to help each other.
I wanted them to come in and feel safe being here, to be okay, like feeling comfortable around their peers. We have girls, we have boys in here, we have experience, we have non-experience. The sense of confidence that they get from it, they're proud for themselves and that's awesome. As a teacher, that's what you want to see, for students to be proud of themselves.
Dr. Rowner.
Here.
Mr. Shpazdop.
Present. Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available at the main entrance of the room. We have minutes from our September 24th meeting for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Oh, sorry, October 8th, that was off. Seeing none, the minute stand approved is published. Special reports, presentation, celebration of success. Annie.
Oh, yes, it's me, isn't it? It's very exciting. We're going to have a presentation about our student vote and who better to do that than the students themselves? This is very exciting. So come on down and Ms. Kellison will take you away and thank students.
Thank you for having us here. We are so excited to be here. My name is Jackie Kellison and I am the Curriculum Specialist for Social Studies in Lincoln Public Schools.
I'm Gabriel Bugai. I'm a senior at Lincoln East High School.
I'm McKenna Kroger. I'm a ninth grader at Lincoln Southeast.
I will just briefly talk a little bit about the purpose and process for student vote and then I will have Gabriel and McKenna talk a little bit more about their role in the event and what they've learned from the process. So the purpose of student vote, which we do every two years in Lincoln Public Schools, is to really focus on the importance of voting, the types of things that citizens get to have a voice in, whether it be a candidate that they're electing or an issue that they're voting on, why your voice matters, why your voice is important, and why it's important to just be informed and be a part of the democratic process. So students become familiar with what's on the Lancaster County ballot and they get to see a snippet of that and make some decisions on that, but it's totally just focused on the process of voting rather than on the particular party platforms and views of candidates. The process that we go through here is that every school has a teacher advisor and these teacher advisors work with student election commissioners in their buildings to figure out the best way to implement the event in their building. So it's every student, grades four through 12, that has the opportunity to vote. There are some elementary buildings that also involve our K3 students, so they might read books about voting, read books about the president, they might get to vote on something like a theme day, something like that, that they can still see that their voice matters and that they can have a say in something. And then we also communicate with families about student vote so that families know, Mindy will send out in the family message this month, a link to the sample ballot so that families will know the items that their students are going to vote on as well. And we have some curriculum materials that we provide teachers to support both teachers and students in implementing the event. So we have three, we call them hype videos, because who doesn't get hyped about voting, right? And the electoral process. So the first voting video is about the importance of informed voting and we have students and we also have elected officials that are featured on those videos. Our communications team does a great job of putting those together. Our second one is on elections and civility, why it's important to disagree respectfully. And then our third one is starring both of these guys and also Dr. Gosman on how to vote, where they actually go to the election commission and walk through the process of voting. So we've got those that all voting students will watch next week. And then we have additional curriculum materials at elementary, middle, and high school that again, talk about the importance of voting, voting rights, all those fun things that go along with the election. And we also have resources cross-curricular, not just in social studies, that prepare students to have civil discourse and use media literacy skills to make sure that they are having informed conversations about what's going on around the election process.
All right. So a lot of what we do as student ambassadors is we communicate with all the district building community and government leaders. So some of the people that we've talked with and communicated with to get to participate in our videos include Mayor Baird. Also, in 2022, we had Deb Fisher and then this year, we also had several, Jim Pillen. We communicated with him and we also communicated with many other officials as well as school professionals to get students to participate in these events. So a lot of what we do as ambassadors is what ambassadors do, communicate with people to try to get them onto our kind of mission in a way. And we also provided student perspectives in our planning meetings. So when we were planning the video that Dr. Gosman and us two were a part of, we were there to kind of build the sets, or not the sets, the scenes, and design how the video would look. So we've been a part of a lot of that. Now turn me.
Geez, Gabriel took the cake there. As well as providing our perspectives, we provide, like, we, sorry, not provide, we participate in the promotional content, we participate in the videos, we participate in, sorry, we participate in the videos as well as Dr. Gosman and we help, let's see, I don't write this. Yeah, we, well, Gabriel said that, but we help communicate with the people in the content. But as well as promoting, as well as participating in the promotional content, we promote the voting among our friends. We talk to them and I love talking, like, but I get a little nervous in times like this, so.
You're doing good.
Thank you.
You're doing great.
We talk with our friends, our teachers, even people we don't know as well as we do in our classes. We talk about the videos, we talk about what we do and we talk about like just voting in general. We talk about how important it is and pretty much just promote the videos and get them excited for the videos that we're premiering next week.
And also on the 30th, right, which is the day of the student vote election, we will be coming over here up into one of our, the meeting rooms in this building to announce the results of student vote live on KFOR and KFRX. So that is a big part of what we do. We kind of like provide the voice of the students so that they can hear from another student what the results of their election looks like.
When is that again? So everybody knows, because that's who I want to vote to.
And for kind of some of the things that we learn from student vote, we get to create a lot of connections across the community. So not only is this an opportunity to promote voting, it's also an opportunity to get to know some people who are pretty important in both Lincoln, Nebraska, and the United States overall. Of course, we're not like becoming best friends with these people, but we are going, we are getting the opportunity to make those connections with them and have those brief little moments where we can feel like students are being heard by the elected officials who kind of represent them on a larger level. And it also has increased our interest in the election process. For me, I participated in the 2022 election as a student vote ambassador and then also this year's election. And I'll just say that in 2022, prior to student vote, I did not really know what voting entailed and I also did not really care. But after I became a student vote ambassador, voting became a large thing on my radar and it became a passion of mine, especially with government and politics, which is why I'm currently in AP Government and Politics at Lincoln East High School. And also participating in the We the People competition, which is big on knowing the Constitution. So the government has certainly become a big thing in my life. It's become a second passion and it's really just helped me understand how important our voting in democracy is. And alongside student vote, I've gotten the opportunity to interview Dr. Gosman for an article for my school newspaper. So using my position to kind of promote voting in other ways than just being an ambassador and producing videos and everything, also writing articles so students can learn how they can be informed voters and what the process looks like on the day of the election if they are in fact voting, also including registration. So yeah, just lots of connections with the community and lots of opportunities with being a student vote district ambassador.
It's on the 30th. That's next Wednesday, by the way.
Oh, October 30th.
So October 30th. Do you have a time for when KAT is going to be?
Looks like that's the last one.
Between 3:45 and 4:00.
Okay. People anxiously awaiting for that, yeah.
But October 30th is the election day, right? That's not when the results are announced.
It's their election.
That is when the results are announced.
Are announced, October 30th? Okay.
That's when 9:45.
Yeah. You get one back, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what we do as ambassadors, we hope that all the students like learn that their voices matter, not like, not just certain, all voices matter. We want them to know that they are important to this election and that their vote is their say in our government. And we also want them to know that voting is a core principle of our democracy. I'm going to be real honest, I don't know a whole lot about politics. I barely knew what democracy and like the republic meant a few weeks ago, but we also want them to know that their vote, that their educated vote is the best kind of vote that there is out there. So, yeah.
Yeah, and just kind of reemphasizing some of those points, we want all students in Lincoln Public Schools to kind of understand that after they leave these mock elections and are able to vote in real elections, that they should be using their voices because nobody can express their voice but themselves. Because these elections can only be representative of the population if the population is participating in the elections. So when you have 50% turnout, it's not a good look for representation when we could have 90% turnout. It's kind of like with our goals in our district with like 85% graduation rate is great and all, but 90% is what would be even better. So like just kind of moving up that voter turnout rate and that I think kind of is rooted in student vote. And if all the schools across America implemented student vote, I think we would see a lot more future voters in our world.
So just the logistics here then. Next Wednesday is when this happens throughout the day and then the results will be announced at the end of the day. These are the particulars that are on the student vote ballot. So the student vote ballot, like I said earlier, is just a snippet of what is on the larger Lancaster County ballot. So our students will vote on President of the United States, they will vote on both of the US Senate races, the District One Representative, and then also Initiative Measure 436, which is the paid sick leave initiative measure. Any questions?
Yes.
I don't know if I have questions. I think first, I want to say I'm really proud of the two of you. You did a great presentation to a bunch of old people sitting up here who are just, we are political junkies, so we loved it that you did it and you made great eye contact. So congratulations on that. The second is I'm really proud of you for getting involved in student vote because it is really important that the next generation is prepared to take these seats somewhere in this life and to take the seats of all elected officials. And I've watched Gabriel the last couple of years, he's, he was like you a couple of years ago, so you have room to grow because he did. So good job.
Thank you.
Any surprises that you met with, or did you hear, interact with Mayor Gilian Baird and Governor Pillen, or was it just like, did you get to interact with them at all? And if so, any surprises meeting them?
I didn't talk with them, well, I didn't talk with Jim Pillen directly, but I did talk with his secretaries and the people in the office. They were all really nice. I thought they would be a lot more intense. Like, I don't know. I didn't have like a good idea. I thought they'd be like more intense and more like demanding on like certain dates and stuff, but they were all really nice and that was, it was really comforting, honestly. So.
In 2022, talking with Deb Fisher's staffers was a bit rough because of time zones and being at school. So playing phone tag with a staffer wasn't something I thought I would be doing, but I think we went back and forth maybe four times throughout the day leaving voicemails so that we could try to figure out how the video is going to be filmed. And finally, we were able to connect together instead of just through voicemails and figure out all the information that they needed so that they could produce the video that we did receive and put into our student vote videos. And the mayor actually was a lot busier than we thought she would be, which makes sense. You know, she's the mayor. And we had to be flexible and change deadlines so that she could participate and she ended up being able to make it work. So we have her in our second video, I believe.
Anybody else? Paige?
I'm curious. I know the instructions say that this is not supposed to be, you know, following any party platforms or particular views, but I'm just curious that when you're talking to fellow students, do things get, you know, a little tense or people say things that are not nice or is it pretty amicable?
So definitely in my human geography class, it gets a little heated. I was talking with a couple of my friends and students overheard about it and then it like, it just kind of started into an all-out, I would say, kind of a brawl where people were like shouting their opinions and like talking over others. And honestly, it was like kind of eye-opening a little bit, which doesn't sound like the greatest because they're arguing and yelling. Like to hear like freshmen in my classes arguing about things that you can tell they don't know much about was, was kind of, it was really interesting, honestly, to see where they like got these things and they're like, oh, I got it from YouTube, I got it from TikTok. Oh, I don't know if that's very factual. So I don't know. It was just kind of interesting to just hear where they got this information from.
Okay.
I think what will help with that is our Elections and Civility video, because that really talks about how you can have a civil conversation with differing views. We hope that that will be effective in fixing those kinds of issues. In my experience with students expressing their views when I would bring up voting, this wasn't directly student vote ambassador, but I did participate in some voter registration drives for AP Gopo. And we did not get very many signatures because a lot of people are registered if they can vote. And people who aren't registered either didn't want to register or they were too young. And a lot of the people, when we'd ask them if they were able to register today, they would just say, or like when they would read the sign of voter registration drive, a lot of them would say who they were voting for. So I thought it was interesting with, people are very open about who they're voting for. Some people, like in our video, we say with Dr. Gosman, it's between me and the ballot. That's one of his lines. So that's kind of something that, it's all over the place. There's very differing views. And as you were mentioning about social media, Dr. Gosman kind of summarized that in our interview for the article. He said that social media is not really the greatest place to get your political information because it tends to be very extreme either side. So a lot of students unfortunately get a lot of their information from social media, which makes a lot of the debates that we hear, or debates, it's more just arguing, misinformed or not exactly the way we want to see it. But our videos should help educate some of the scholars who will be able to vote in what they should be looking for and how they should be approaching becoming informed voters.
That's great, yeah. We should promote that video to teach civility, yeah. Thank you.
Well, we do get to hear about this when we're in our WHAM committee and so it's really nice and thank you really very much for coming and, you know, giving us some real perspective and student perspective on how this is working out and the importance, the lessons of not only that you're reading in the classroom, but that you guys are taking the extra and others are taking the extra to learn about because that is really the only way, Scotty says, we're going to be replaced at some point if we're like, you know. And that is really, really heartening to hear. So thank you very much again for taking the time tonight to come and talk to us about this and I do hope, and I know it works out. I know my kids used to be so excited about student vote day and that when they'd come home and talk about which part won and this part won and that, and then it'd be so fascinating a week later to do the comparison. I think that's another fascinating aspect. You learn about how much your children are listening to you in the household and why they will do the way they would vote. So I think it's great to have all these other lessons. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kellison, are the videos available for the general public to look at on the website? And can you tell them where they can access those?
Yes, yes, they are. And I believe they will be posted by our communications team, I believe, on social media channels as well as the front page of the website on the day that they are released. At least in.
Yeah, Mindy stepped out.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm making eye contact with people, but in 2022, that's what we did, is it was posted on the front page of the LPS website. We basically have one for Monday, one for Tuesday, and one for Wednesday so that there's kind of a planned release because they're such a big deal. So they will be on the website.
I think that's really good because you have basic voter information. You have, where do you get your information? We can agree to agree, disagree agreeably and the civility piece. So that's really important. I have a few siblings I'd like to send that to, so thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
All right. Next, we have public comment. Our next, blue cards available to the interest of those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. We have no blue cards, so we will be on to the consent agenda. Are there any items? Oh, Kathy.
Move approval consent items, 8.1 and 8.2. That's human resource matters and routine business.
Do I have a second? Barb?
I second that.
Okay. Any items to remove from the consent agenda? Any conflict statements? I have one. I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on Agenda Item 8.2A. As to all matters identified in and reflected by my separate potential conflict of interest statement filed herewith, my vote in favor of consent is a vote in favor of all other consent items except those identified in that statement upon which I have and do hereby abstain. Laura, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Shpazdop?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Next, nine is first reading. We have under 9.2, 9.2.1, Schools and Libraries Cybersecurity Pilot Program. Miss Kirk?
That's me. Andrew Gelati will start. Okay. Mike. Good evening, board members. What you have before you tonight is an action item where the FCC has recently launched the Schools and Libraries Cybersecurity Pilot Program. They're doing this to learn about the needs that schools and libraries have in the area of cybersecurity. The overall purpose is for them to learn and determine whether or not this should be an area that's extended to the current E-Rate program run by the FCC to help schools and libraries get access to resources for internet and telecommunications. And so what they learn from this would be used to determine if perhaps they should also be providing funding for schools and libraries in the area of cybersecurity. We would like the opportunity to apply for these funds. Our Computing Services Department has worked with our Federal Programs Department to review the application process. We would really like to be a part of both informing the FCC's work in this area, we have a great team, and it would also allow us access to resources to help bolster our own cybersecurity support systems here. Funds if awarded would be used to purchase a web filtering and security platform through a bid process. Participation does require a match. There's a 20% match with this, which would be covered by funds that are already budgeted in the 2425 budget. There is a due date for proposal submissions of November 1st. We would ask the board to consider waiving second reading and taking action on this item tonight.
Questions? Kathy?
I don't have a question, but I would move that we set aside our rules and approve in one reading due to the deadline date being November 1 of 2024.
Okay. Do I have a second? Dawn?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Kathy?
Cybersecurity seems to be the biggest discussion item that I get probably four to five emails every day on. And anything that can ramp up protecting us, especially with all of the new technology of the AI and how you can tell if it's a fake or a real person, that technology is moving very, very quickly and I'm grateful that we're looking at ways to boost and bolster our cybersecurity.
Okay. Annie?
And if Kirk were here, you would know this, this is Cybersecurity Month. Am I correct? I am correct. I know I am correct. I have to do a couple of cybersecurity trainings this month in honor of this. So I think it's more than appropriate that we would want to do this as well as, I think it just seems like a very, very good idea because cyber threats are the number one thing that we're going to have to really, really be aware of. And we have a lot of devices out there and we have a lot of devices attached to a lot of information we would like to keep private and we use it. So I think it's a great idea, especially in National Cybersecurity Month.
And I just wanted to acknowledge that Kirk Wanger, our chief executive in technology, was speaking at a national convention and is on his way back, but that's why he's not with us this evening.
He might know something about the topic, so. All right. Laura, would you call the roll?
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Shpazdop?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. We have no items for second reading, no expedited emergency items, no items removed from consent agenda. So we're on to informational items and reports. Are there anything from the board committees? Anything from special appointments? From the superintendent?
Yeah, very briefly, board, you may notice a familiar face in the crowd this evening. I want to take a moment to congratulate and welcome Dr. John Neal as the interim president for the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools. As you know, Dr. Neal brings a wealth of experience to the foundation, having recently retired from the Lincoln Public Schools after a distinguished 22-year career, and you look well-rested. Appreciate you. We welcome him back to the Board of Education meetings, albeit in a different role, and we look forward to working with him and the foundation. As it relates to the Career Academy Career Fair, Annie and I serve on the Career Academy Board. On October 10, I had the opportunity to attend the Career Academy Career Fair. This annual event is a shining example of our partnerships with local and regional businesses. The Lincoln Chamber helped us a great deal to promote this event and we had 57 companies in attendance with over 800 students participating in the job fair this year. The Career Academy, under the direction of Josh Jones, is doing an amazing job of connecting our students with future employers and helping them forge their path forward. Finally, related to interview days, for those that might like to. forward. Finally, related to interview days, for those that might like to work in the school or with the school district, at our last meeting, I told you about two interview days that our HR staff were preparing for at that time. And I'm excited to announce tonight that we had 34 candidates during our transportation interview day, and 37 candidates during our para educator interview day. We still have positions to fill, however, so please go to our website and check out the job offerings. Board, we do have another interview fair coming up next week. Anyone interested in becoming a teacher, counselor, school psychologist, speech-language pathologist, social worker, or school nurse within the Lincoln Public Schools are eligible to participate in that educator interview fair. That event will be Wednesday, October 30th, which I believe is also Student Vote Day that we just heard about, but Wednesday, October 30th. But those who wish to participate must register by October 28. Go to our website, lps.org, for more information, and with that, I close my report.
Is there anything from the monthly financial report? Nope, okay. On to announcements of upcoming events. On October 26th is the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet, 6:00 PM at Innovation Campus. October 28 to 30 is the Councils of Urban Boards of Education, I think I got that right, back in my, conference in Las Vegas, Nevada, which several of us will be attending. November 7th is the Safe and Successful Kids Board Meeting at 6:30 PM here at the Steve Joel, and again, back here at November 12th, the Board Meeting at 6:00 PM. No other public comment. Do I have a request? We have a request for closed session. Kathy?
I would move that we recess and go into closed session for items number six and seven, that's personnel and legal advice.
Do I have a second? Annie?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Shvostov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Board will go into recess and then adjourn after our closed session.